I'll call the Act of Planning Board meeting of December nineteenth, twenty twenty four to order. And first thing is the salute to the flag.
Flag to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we're gonna table the minutes from November fifth, because we don't have enough members who are present at that date here.
But that means like you designate any alternates, individuals?
Sure, it looks like Andrew was here at the last meeting. So.
Well, you need to designate Roger and Andrew for time.
All right, we'll have two alternates then. Roger and Andrew. And we'll move on to new business.
One second, Gavin. So, Arnie wanted to just say something to the board before he came and got his subdivision plan, signed off on today because he brought in the preliminary, so he just wanted to step up and just say something to the board quickly, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
No, I'll just be there.
Okay, we're all set? I think it's all signed?
You're good.
All right, good enough. You guys have been great to deal with as a board. And I want to thank you very much for everything, and I'll make it act I'm proud of you, so it'd be nice when I'm done. There's a bunch of more treaties coming, and I want to wish you guys Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and thank you for everything.
Merry Christmas, Arnie.
Anything else, Jason?
I'm glad, I just asked you to do that.
All right. So, new business. LDP Construction, Foxes Ridge Road. It looks like we have Joe Stanley is gonna speak to us from further.
Probably gonna put it up on the board, but I think I'm comfortable sometimes just pointing here anyhow. Joe, if you want pointer. Been dangerous for that before. So it's a little button there here? Did you go?
Yep.
Yep. All right, good evening. I'm Joe Stanley with Line Curl Land Surveying. I'm here representing LDP Construction. What we're proposing, you know, we're at the sketch plan process. As far as your subdivision regulations go, we're introducing this project tonight. What we're proposing is a subdivision of about eight and a half acres, so we're on the southwest side of Foxes Ridge Road. We've performed a boundary survey of the property with the limits of which are shown here. And we're basically just proposing four very standard lots, utilizing existing road frontage and obviously existing acreage that's there. The entire property is kind of a steady slight slope to the property that kind of heads east to west. And then what you see in there, we have four proposed driveway entrances for each lot. Each of those entrances has been reviewed already by the main Department of Transportation, as this Foxes Ridge is a state aid road. We do have successful entrance permits from them deeming all four of those entrances safe. We've had Kenny Gardner of J R K Soils review the properties. He has mapped any applicable forested wetlands and also checked lots two, three, and four for suitable septics for soils. Lot one already has a building that's nearly completed on it. Has shown that location, which is a permitted structure that Code has been working with our client on making sure everything was done right at that particular location. Yeah, otherwise, I think it's fairly straightforward. Happy to answer any questions the board or the audience may have.
What's the purple triangle in lot one in the buffer?
Oh, that's the septic system that was designed for that particular building that's going in there previously. That's where the septic planks were from that particular design.
Oh, I see what you're saying, close to the road there. Is that an issue that it's within the buffer with the road?
This was, so the building, the building and the septic was put in before the subdivision plan went through, so they're just showing you the fifty foot buffer
Yeah.
right now, as they, pretty much for the remaining lots. I think that lot's still vegetated, except for where that septic system is.
So the system's already put in?
Yes, the system is currently in place and hooked up to the house, just not, right?
Where are we? Are we on the hill here?
Yeah, right here, Gavin.
Like right on the steep hill there?
Yeah, it's climbing the hill.
Yeah, yeah.
This property right here is what it is, and it's and yeah, it's right as you're, it's middle of the hill going up. So I think Blueberry Hill is right over here somewhere, it's a counter room, yeah, so.
Other way, right?
Yes, Blueberry Hill is the next one up. So, yeah.
I suppose I could use that.
So, yeah, it's not the top of that, Blueberry Hill is the top of that hill.
On the other side.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
So, and the purple line is the rural slash critical rural?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Yeah.
Joe, what is it, five hundred feet off of the road?
Yeah, I believe that's what it was. Yes. It's three hundred and two. And then it was halfway through this, so yes, it's five hundred.
All the proposed building envelopes will feed closer to the road, outside the vegetated buffer?
Yeah, so all of any proposed building areas, which we can definitely delineate that more clearly on here, are proposed between this, the edge of the wetland that's here and the wooden buffer along the road.
Is that blue line the wetland setback or the edge of the wetland?
That would be the edge of the forested wetlands that Mr. Gardner observed.
Right, doesn't look like it's town RP, it's just a wetland.
Yeah, no, it's just a forested wetland.
Yeah.
Gavin, on the map you can see.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this. I'm just looking at this stream, the stream that's on the town map, I'm just wondering how the stream overlaid on the.
Yep, so the stream is, I think this is the one you're talking about right here, and it actually starts heading toward this way.
Oh, right, yeah.
You can see a faint line if I get rid of the critical rule.
So approximately fifteen hundred feet or so to the west of this, the stream.
Okay, so it's not. To look close to the water. And that's what the wetlands feed into.
Right, or the stream feeds down into those wetlands.
I was actually at the property today, and actually, the wetlands come off pretty much the Blueberry Hill side, it's really just kind of just run off of that hill. It's really not coming from the stream, I would say, really. I mean, I don't, I'm watching the water.
Right, I was talking about the research protection area on the map and the stream connecting, but yes, this would be a separate feature over here.
So you have two foot contours on there?
Yes.
So it's a fairly steep parcel.
It's, yeah, it's not, it's definitely not flat, there's some contour to it. Again, it kind of pitches down from this each silly corner down in this direction at a fairly steady, steady pace.
Yeah.
So you've got the building envelopes identified, Joe, is not here?
I mean, we can definitely make it more clear as the project progresses. This is kind of at the first stage, the sketch plan part of this, we just try to provide as much information as possible, but yes, the front setback lines are here on the back edge of the buffer strips, kind of the black line. And then you can see these edges of the forested wetland, and any proposed building would be between those two lines shown on the plan at this point in time. But I can definitely highlight that, hatch that, make that stand out more on future versions of the plan.
Yeah, it does look like lots two, three, and four might be kind of tight with the wetland. There's room for it. Especially with the buffer from the road too.
So, yeah, I'm on page eleven right now, maybe, yeah, eleven?
In the subdivision?
Yeah, just kind of outlined, and so, yeah, if you wanted to just take a quick gander, it's not very long, it's like a page or whatever.
Yeah.
It just, before we go too, too much further, it just looks like we're missing some information, specifically like the narrative, like a pretty it doesn't need to be super in-depth, right, but we are, we're kind of missing just like a general overview of what the vision is, you know? And part of that vision includes things like what you're going, like, like the going in plan for where the buildings are gonna be, with the area you're thinking, that kind of thing, and that kind of stuff. Before we can really, I think we can really proceed even from the sketch plan phase, that, just from what I'm seeing, you guys can tell me what you think it would, what it looks like. Yeah, just in the first paragraph there, five point three, last sentence, narrative should include general proposals for how any common areas infrastructure can be managed, so how things are gonna be managed and maintained with respect to the subdivision.
That also goes towards clusters and things like that.
Totally, totally, totally. Like if there isn't any, then there isn't any.
Yeah.
You know, then, you know, then just say as much, that kind of thing. On the next page.
Well, we've got a sketch plan application form, which you got. Of course, the B, the topo map, which has got the two foot contours, C, copy of that portion of York County Soil Survey covering the proposed subdivision. And D, the written narrative.
You said there was a soil survey?
Well, we have had test kits performed on each of the lots for septic suitability through Mr. Gardner's office, and I believe we submitted a copy of the York County Soils document packet.
So we'll get those things and return to where to the next meeting?
Yeah, just, I mean, I would, like I said, I would just probably go through these checklists right here, right? So, you know, everything from total floor area, proposed buildings, ground coverage calculations, location of each proposed building, and structure addition, copy of, we got a copy of the deed, which is good. And, yeah, and we got a copy of the date of certified perimeter survey, so all that stuff's good, but like, but that, and including basically, including that narrative piece.
I don't know, I'm just reading that, but I don't know how they can provide you with a floor area, I mean, they don't know what's being built there yet.
We, I'm just kind of, so I guess that's.
Yeah, I think a building envelope would be more on the suffice side of that, because how you know what's gonna go there?
Sure, sure, building envelope, but anyway, but something pertaining to the build, the structures that are gonna be on there.
You're talking like, you know, single family ranches?
That's right.
Kilomiles, things like that?
That's right.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, some idea from the scale.
Sure, yep. Yeah, and that'll do.
Well, I mean, there's a chance these lots may be sold without structures being built on them.
Is that?
Looking for applicants to clear that.
Exactly, but like, that would be something to, yeah, that would be something to include in the narrative as well. Like what are the, what's the grand scheme here?
Okay.
Yeah, do you know, Joe, is it like someone's gonna?
I, I mean, we have our good instinct, but things change all the time with these sorts of things. We don't usually at the sketch plan level of one of these applications, which people often refer to as a sketch on a napkin at the time, try to make that decision of who's going to build the lot when all things are done. But I can certainly try to make some educated predictions and get that written out for you folks.
Yes, a narrative, building envelopes, soil survey. Should, should cover it?
I think unless someone else has seen something else, that's kind of what I honed in on in terms of what we need to kind of complete this step.
From our perspective, I think one of the major goals for us at this time would maybe just to get the site walk accomplished, just so you guys can deal with that in favorable snow conditions, rather than waiting until the middle of February for that part of it, and then we can have a much more informed discussion of the site conditions as well, at least that part of it is taking place.
If you guys read the first paragraph, the purpose of a sketch plan, it's even saying before they even do soil surveying, soils identification, or engineering by the, that's what a sketch plan is for. So I think you guys are going above, you're asking for information that we're gonna need further down, but I think at this point, it's to really, like Joe was asking for, let's go look at the lot, look at the thing. I understand that this is conflicting, some of the stuff that's written here, because some of it, as you read on, or even in the application says it's calling for some of this stuff, but a sketch plan is, hey, this is what I'd like to do, here's my, what I'm proposing, what do you guys want from me? Give or take.
But we need a little more than just, this is what I wanna do.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even entirely.
It's black and white.
Well, what's the first?
The first thing I looked at when I went through this is where's the little description? And it can be written on it, it doesn't have to be engineered, we just have to have kind of an overall description.
Do we want to schedule a site review, I mean, a site walk, so that we can?
I don't have any problem with doing it, as long as we get the you know, this isn't the end of the sketch plan meeting, we have to get the write-up at the, I guess, the next meeting.
I would say basically, if we were to, this is just my suggestion, would be like if we were to schedule basically a site walk, if all that, if all of this required information was there at the site walk in conjunction with that week's meeting, so we could basically get eyes on and then review on paper at the same time, basically what we saw at the same time, I think that would probably be equitable.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to get the information, so we know what we're looking at when we're on the ground.
So whenever we get it, if we could get like maybe the information like available in the office that week?
Yeah, if you, Joe, you can get it to me as soon as possible, and I can get it to these guys. I'll email it, I'll get you guys, I'll call you, I'll email it to you, let you know when it's in and whatnot, and you can have a review before the site walk.
Cool.
So can we, if we want to establish a date, can we get, you know, this right up in a week?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely, whatever the timing of the site walk is, we will be there, whatever timing you guys suggest. As soon as we want it fit?
Next meeting is the second, right?
Yep, January second.
And that works for everyone, it's not, not too close to New Year's, it works.
I'm working, so it doesn't.
You're working that day.
Schedule a day at work.
Yeah, I'm good with the second.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine, if you want to get out there before it gets dark, obviously, though, being, kind of one fact.
So I'm here, we'll have the, have something to look at that we can pick up, and then we'll do the site walk on the second before the meeting?
Um, is it what, is what works best for everybody? I mean, I think, what time is it starting to get dark right now?
Four.
Four thirty-ish, so if we can do it.
It's dark at four thirty.
Yeah, so if we could do a three thirty, three, three thirty?
Yeah.
If that's possible.
Three o'clock would be good.
Three o'clock?
Yeah, I think if everybody can do that.
I can do three.
Joe, do you have an issue with something like that?
Nope, I don't, they would like to do, we will, gladly.
And you think, can you get me the stuff?
If we do about the twenty-six, then everybody can pick it up on the twenty-seven?
Yeah, that's no problem at all. And we did make it so that you guys can go on the town website, and I guess you can type in your email address, and then use whatever password you have, or whatever it is, you can actually access your emails that way right now, until we can get you in front of Dan Krampitz, the IT guy. He made it just a temporary solution, but we'll also get hard copies and call everybody.
Throw in a second, do you need a motion?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion. I'll make a.
I move we do a site walk at fifteen seventy-four Foxes Ridge Road, and tax map two sixty, lot twenty-two, on January second, at three o'clock.
I'll second that. All in favor? Anyone oppose? All right, we'll see you then.
Awesome, thank you all very much. Thank you, Joe.
All right. Next on the agenda, Live Free Land Development, Tattle Street, map two fifty-two, lot one. Subdivision, sketch plan, after.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, especially so close to Christmas. My name's Shawna, I'm here representing my friends Colton and Alex and our newly formed LLC, Live Free Land Development. We own a twenty-eight acre parcel on Tattle Street and are hopeful to subdivide. And really, we're here just for the sketch, and preliminarily are hoping for your feedback. I'm not sure whether or not you had the opportunity to review the letter and plan, the image here that we had sent in. But really, we love Acton, Shapley, and the lake. We saw this parcel listed, and we're really excited about it. We came out and checked out the neighborhood and walked the land and fell in love with it. Cumulatively, we have seven young children and are hoping to build some sort of a camp for our kids to enjoy the river and the woods and the trees. And so our intention is to retain what we call potentially lot one, the first lot that is adjacent to Thirty-Fifth Street there, into the plan, so we're seeking four new lots. I understand the zone of this parcel to be critical rural, and I believe that all of these five proposed new parcels would conform to all of the requirements, you know, dimensional requirements associated with the zone. We've completed preliminary survey, wetland delineation, and test pits, all passed, all passing test pits there. Each of the lots has, would have approximately three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Tattle Street. We are hoping that all of these lots would be accessed via Thirty-Fifth Street and have a shared driveway. We've met with Adele Richfield, her husband, and our neighbors to get their buy-in on, they, I'm sorry, they run the Tattle Street Road Association, so we met with them to see what their thoughts would be on us gaining access from Thirty-Fifth, and everybody seemed to be on board with it. Lots one, two, four, and five would have frontage on Keith Brook there. Like I said, we met with the neighbors just to make sure that they'd be supportive of something like this, and we did not get any negative feedback. We told them that we were going to be on this agenda. I don't see any of them here, but we did not, we did not get any negative feedback from them on what was being proposed here. I think that that pretty much covers the intention and what our hopes are here, and again, we're just here really to get your feedback and see what your thoughts are on us subdividing this land in the way that is depicted on the screen.
Before you put the shed road in?
Yes. So yeah, we have, we've since added our hopeful shared driveway here, we'll just leave it for your view. Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, I was just trying to, I was looking on, on my computer. I'm fine, I have, no, I have the, I was just talking about on the display.
Noticed on the applications, this is the property within the Resource Protection District, and hasn't been filled out. Any, did you go over that with Jason?
Yes, Jason, we, we met with him in his office, and he explained that to us, we haven't really walked too far down anything, like I said, anything specific. We are aware of it, we have asked our, the surveyor that we worked with to go ahead and put it on this image for our final, you know, plan submission. But in the meantime, I think we're just hoping, ready to get some feedback on, you know, the, just the drawing here.
Can you get the RP on there?
Give me a second, I'm working on it.
That's what you're doing?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we are clear the difference between RP and RP.
Gavin, the, is it three lots in five years?
I think it's just two, I think it's two.
So you, you can make one lot, you can divide one lot, and then after, so you have your main lot, and then once you divide it once, after that, second division, so you're third lot. So you're, so you have a main lot, then you divide it once, and then any division after that would be subject to subdivision.
And this particular lot hasn't been divided in the last five years?
No.
Okay, so. But you do wanna break it into four lots within the next five years?
Four new lots, yes.
So you do get some right here, Gavin?
Okay, so it's the yellow?
It's the slope.
The steep slopes?
The steep slope, yep.
Yeah, I see that on this. It's right on Heath Brook, on a.
Yes.
Or like the, the confluence of Heath Brook and Lower Mawson.
As you look at their map, you can see the top was really lines extremely close to each other.
Yeah.
Yes, so the plan, it's upside down in terms of what would be in this area, I hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nothing, thanks, Joe. Did you say you had an extra copy of the larger one than that? I guess that's a good one. Thanks, appreciate it.
Are the wetlands identified on this?
Yeah, yes, sir.
This is the, this one. There is a small one right here, Joe, up on the, this one right here.
Over there.
Uh, there's some over in the far back corner at the top, um, the five point seven acre, a little narrow, longer narrow one. There's another one. This is another one up here. One over here.
One, two, three.
When the RP should need to find up here. Just for reference. And the road itself follows the two thirty.
Those, the one in that top corner that I just showed you, it looks like there's two separate wetlands right there, Joe?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right in the very corner of it.
Yeah, maybe we can see.
Just so I'm wrapping my head around this correctly, um, about the twenty-eight acre parcel, you wanna retain Lot One, right up there at the north. Or down there at the south, I'm sorry, down there, down there at the south. Uh, and break the other section into four, into four parcels which will remain, that you just wanna sell the parcels off to, in order to fund the building of the camp?
Essentially, yes.
That's like, that's kind of, that's kind of the grand, the grand scheme.
Yes, sir. Right.
Okay, cool. So I'm wrapping, so the, the rest of the land will basically, like, you have no plans to like, to develop, to build for more buildings and develop on any of those other parcels or anything here, just. You just wanna break it up, sell those pieces in order to fund the building of the camp?
That's the plan, yes, sir.
Okay, now, okay, good, just wanna make sure I'm grasping that whole, that whole thing. Maybe read what the actual word it says.
I just have a question here, you make a couple of references to note thirteen as far as the natural low watermark is, and there is no note fifteen.
Oh, yeah, that is true, thank you for that, yeah, I'll, I'll let our, have our surveyor tighten it up for one week.
So I guess we should be clear, if you're proposing a cluster subdivision or a typical subdivision?
Our hopes is for the typical.
So I'm looking at under note five dimensional requirements, you have the asterix there. All divisions of land shall be developed as a cluster subdivision with a minimum sixty percent of whole acreage to, in order to dedicate to open space.
Yes.
So that is the, if you look under the, which are requirements for critical rule.
Right, well, that's why I'm asking them what the proposal is.
So our hope is potentially, we had talked about Jason and Dave about this briefly, I think our hopes are to go with the conventional, which I can speak to in a second, but, um. Yeah, whether or not we need relief, or I guess we're looking for a little bit of feedback from you all about next steps, but our, from our perspective, so we've read into the ordinance and understand the spirit of the ordinance. Of this, you know, critical rural needing to cluster if more than X number of lots to be, the intention is to focus the development on one area, and we think that the characteristics of this specific parcel of land lend itself. That the use, the better use of this land is to do the typical subdivision, like you said, the, you know, minimum five acres and everything. And really, the reason, some of the reason why is there's some steep slopes, and also, like we said, since all these lots are to be pretty large, we assume that all of the development is gonna take place here. The first, let's say, four hundred feet of the parcel, so if, if the town, you all, were willing to work with us on some relief, we'd be happy to essentially create what you're looking for. This conservation, open space, and by deed restriction, restricting, building, subdivision, clearing, like anything, you know, any, any of that stuff, because, like we said, we presume that, I mean, this is the, our plan, like we, like you had said, so that. Get these lots approved and then sell them off to builders or individuals or whoever, but we have the shared driveway, everyone would take their access on the riverside of the driveway. And really, I don't really foresee anyone needing or wanting to use the land to the rear for, you know, clearing or development, but we'd be happy to restrict any of that there to essentially meet the spirit of the ordinance, which is conserving for open space. But I, I could get the acreage for you, but a significant piece of the parcel, so.
So you're proposing a typical subdivision, so to speak?
Yes.
With deed restrictions and stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of going to like small cluster ones.
I'm trying to define the proposal, just because they do put the note on there, so they are aware of.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we had this discussion, we came in a little, uh, you know. And, uh. I also did mention to them that in the lot five, I don't know if it's being called Lot Five, but right now, it's their, their access road is depicted in the Resource Protection, so that will have to be shifted.
Right, in the Officer Protection District.
Well.
It's coming in right here.
But it, the road already comes in through the Officer Protection District, so if you go back, I, I was.
So there's an existing road here?
Yeah, so let me go back to this, so this is the existing road right now that they're gonna be, they're proposing to come in off of. And this act, this road, if I wanna even go into Google. It already goes that way, so I believe they're just trying to follow it. You see, I'm gonna go to this one here.
Show it right here on this.
See, so they're just, they're proposing to just continue this on, Gavin?
Is that this thing?
To get to these residences here?
Yep, yep. So they're trying to minimize what's already, they're trying to use this as, you know.
And what's gonna happen with that existing, uh, development?
Those are just some trailers that we're having hauled off, or if anyone wants a trailer, feel free.
And these are on the, the lot you're looking, the applicants looking to retain?
Yes, currently they are.
So you'd be open to revegetating part of that area?
Yep.
What is that, just gravel that I'm looking at?
Yes.
The previous owner decided to do a bunch of work that really shouldn't have been done.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're willing to rectify what, what was done by the previous owner.
How about this other trailer, how is that accessed?
Um.
In, hmm.
The cabin.
Oh, it says trailer on the map, it's in the lot, it does not, about the brook.
Yeah, that's to be removed also, it's just like kind of a decrepit shed type thing there, so.
Is there a road to it?
Um, not exactly, I guess.
It would come off of the, off of the gravel, there's kind of a, oh, is that, is that it right there?
Yes, that thing right there.
Okay, alright.
There it is.
So, Jason, you told them to push the road beyond?
Uh, so right now, they have the road kind of following this and then continuing this way, and it jumps into that, so. I can't allow a road in the Resource Protection.
Right.
So they're, they have to, I just can't allow, I, I physically can't allow them to do it.
So then the next update will show the road where it's actually gonna be.
Can you have your, maybe your surveyor put that overlay on, I don't know if he's able to, but see if he can.
Okay.
Put the critical rule overlay on it, just so that the board can actually reference it.
The Resource Protection, you mean?
Yes, yes, please.
Yep.
Right, 'cause the whole thing is pretty much critical rule, right?
The whole thing is, is critical rule, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Andrew, you're reading page forty-four now?
I'm one eighty-two, but, yeah.
Did you look at the?
I'm jumping back and forth.
Forty-four, critical rule, just so we're all on the same page.
Sure.
With the, um. Typical subdivision versus cluster subdivision, what they're asking us to consider in this. It's the last paragraph. Four point eleven.
What, the one that just says all subdivisions will be clustered?
Yeah, well, I just feel like everyone should, I just know, referencing any of the ordinance.
Is there subdivision in here of a normal subdivision?
Well, the normal subdivision for critical role adds the, the five acres and the three hundred and fifty feet of road front, which they do supply. Well, the normal subdivision for critical rural has the five acres and the three hundred fifty feet of road front, which they do supply.
So a normal subdivision would be, you know, dimensional standards, all dimensional standards are being met. And then minimum of fifty percent open space, which is, which would be, which is another deed restriction or something.
So where this is four more lots, this is considered a deed or subdivision?
It's not four more, so it is, it looks like it, but there's, I'm going to read this four more. So you have, here's your first division, this is a division.
Yep.
So this is the whole lot. They're gonna cut this one off themselves.
Yep.
And this is their, this is their second lot. And then they get one, two, three. So it's actually, yeah, so it's critical lots.
Now, it's a horseshoe, right? One, two, oh, it is four.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, yes, you know, because they're creating, this becomes one, this becomes one lot. So this is the one lot they made, then they make this lot. And then they're chipping off three lots from that. So this is, their first division becomes this lot. Huh? It's, they're making four, yeah, it's, it's hard, yeah.
There was one lot, now it's five.
It's correct. Allow, your subdivision starts on your third lot.
Yeah.
So you're allowed two lots. You have your main lot, you chip off one lot.
Okay.
Then once you get to your third lot, it becomes subdivision. Right?
Yeah.
So even though it looks as five lots, but so it's not a.
So it's more of a subdivision. It doesn't matter if it's major or not, though, according to the paragraph on page forty-four. Yeah, exactly, yeah. So that's kind of one, one thing to consider, I guess. There's a lot of things we'd like you to add to the map, but it's, it's hard to ask you to add those things and then have it change the entire plan, so.
Well, we're happy to take notes. I mean, this is, like I said, just like the sketch, so really we're here for feedback and.
We'll kind of have to decide which direction we want you to go in before we ask you that.
So you said you would do.
Modify the plan ten times and then, you know, it'd be easier to then not have to cross.
You said you would be willing to do the deed restriction and create open space on the current lots instead of reconforming the lots.
Yes, and that's what Alex has verified.
Yeah, so you're, instead of doing, you know, smaller lots, one acre cluster subdivision lots, they're, they're just gonna be delineate the back of the lots that can't be touched.
And we could meet the sixty percent requirement through deed restrictions. So if we were allowed to create the lots in this way, I did the math quickly, sixty percent of the total amount of land. And we would be able to, to meet that, still put the houses up here, you know, the sixteen point eight acres we could deed restrict.
Is that another thing that the board would like to see at some point on there? Where are you gonna, what, where there's gonna be some kind of line where they can't do anything with, as open space, doing it as open space?
Um, but you're also gonna have to move the road outside of the resource protection, so that's gonna cut into that, that actual.
We still, yeah, I, I hear you and we'll definitely do that. We've still got plenty of space on this side here. You know, even moving this road up out of that area, I assume it's gonna end up right about here based on what this looks like and what that looks like. Um, but all of this area, you know, back here, putting that into a deed restriction would, would be just what the sixteen point eight acres that would be required for the sixty percent threshold.
I think one of the biggest differences between the cluster and the typical is that it wouldn't be broken into multiple big lots like that. It would be multiple small lots next to each other in the cluster and then the open space as another lot. So the way the land is divided would be significantly different.
You get to the same spot either way then.
Yeah, does it? That's kind of what I was, because I think the open space.
What we want to do with the, the verbiage of the ordinance.
I know, but I'm, you just suggested an alternate, what they said. What I'm saying is, either way we get the one, didn't care, save it.
And we could give the conservation easement to the town.
With deed restrictions.
Yeah, so there is a difference, it's hard to know.
Yeah.
Well, with the, with the open space, has it a lot in the homeowners association? Yeah, if it was less, it's a little more complicated than just have the restrictions.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to go through the differences, I'm not trying to advocate right now. Yeah, I mean, it might be helpful to.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I'm still, how many, um, so selling these individual lots, right? And so these four individual lots is, is the idea, you, you don't have, you don't have any plans of, of building on those additional four lots?
No.
Yeah, so are those lots being sold to individuals basically to? Cause that, that's kind of what I'm looking at there. Are those lots being sold as individual five acre lots to, quite possibly to just individuals to build a single building on, not to divide the remaining twenty-four acres.
They can't.
Into, into one by one acre.
So in the critical rule, you're not allowed to divide, you have to have five acre minutes, so you can't divide it.
And we would put that in the deed restriction, that all of this would not be.
Yeah. Yeah. And the biggest thing, like you were saying before, if this was just getting split into three parcels instead of five. This would be a different conversation, right?
No, no, because it's a critical rule, no matter what goes cluster subdivision. It's how you guys want to define it, with the open space. Uh, because I guess the point of open space is just to, to preserve recreational space and the characteristics of the land. If you can't, if it's deed restricted, you can't do anything. You're creating an open space and you're preserving what's there.
But you're, you're gonna have multiple owners for the multiple lots as opposed to the homeowners association.
Correct, so they're, yeah, yeah.
I do feel that the board should probably redo the standard for cluster subdivisions in the subdivision ordinance on page thirty-nine. Through whatever it is. Just a couple pages. Yeah. How do I get all the bulkers?
No.
I almost feel like we should probably just table this and take it up at the next meeting once everyone's had a chance to review and, and consider the, the differences between a typical and a cluster. I mean, that's kind of what I'm thinking, just because it's kind of a lot to it and they're, they're asking us to basically grant a waiver, which I don't think, I don't know if we're necessarily allowed to grant it, so we really need to consider it pretty thoroughly.
Yeah, no, I mean, guidance would be, would be great.
Yeah.
What's the way?
They wouldn't, they can't.
Right here, you read this, right? So we would have to be, we would have to go against what the ordinance was saying, which you're not supposed to do.
Which requirement are you talking about?
Page forty-four.
Yep.
Under four point one-one, critical rural district, the last paragraph.
Yeah.
All divisions of land where three or more lots or units are created within a five year period shall be divided as a cluster subdivision.
Oh, I got you, okay.
With a minimum of sixty percent of the total acreage as dedicated open space. The total development density shall not exceed that, which could be constructed on the site under conventional nonclustered requirements. The cluster subdivision shall be developed in accordance with the guidelines set forth in section ten thirteen of the subdivision ordinance, which is what we're kind of reviewing right now.
Yeah, no.
And they're definitely different guidelines too, so.
Yep, but this is, this is what I was talking about with respect to the timeline aspect of it, right? It's created within, so dividing it within five years is what creates, makes it the cluster. Otherwise, these individual parcels meet all the requirements, like, had these been done over the course of a ten or fifteen year period. Right, all of, every single one of these individual parcels meets all the requirements that are required within that, right? The, the reason I was looking at actually at page eighty-two in, in here was actually the, uh, the growth, uh, the growth development ordinance with respect to how many, cause I think you're only allowed, uh, Jason's only allowed to accept thirty-five growth ordinance permits uh, per year to make sure that, you know, the town isn't growing at a rate that's unsustainable by the services that it can provide. And so that's actually why I was looking at that, because this is not, this is not an art, this is not an Arnie type of development we're talking about. Right, in terms, the way I'm looking at this is, you know, a, a couple of families want to, don't want to build a whole, a whole neighborhood. They just want to, you know, fund the building of their individual home or camp by selling off land, basically, you know, from an individual parcel. And I think that's why I was looking at the growth development in case of it. So if anything, it would be a, it would be a, um, a growth develop, a growth permit, um, kind of thing that we would issue, kind of a waiver for. Are you following me, John?
No.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Cause, cause growth, he manages.
Yeah, it's kind of a first come, first served.
You don't, you don't.
Yeah, but I'm saying so long as it, so long as you haven't accepted too many applications for that.
Yeah, well, thirty-five is a cutoff, doesn't matter.
Thirty-five is the cutoff, yeah, exactly. So, so long as you haven't received thirty-five, it'd almost be one of those things where this. Like, I'm thinking about it in, in those terms, not necessarily a, a, a building of a, of a neighborhood out there. You, you understand what I'm getting at? Versus a, you know, having to have sketch plans, because they're not gonna have sketch plans for every individual parcel, because they don't want to build, buildings on each parcel. Yeah, that's, that's how I'm looking at it.
Well, that's the same thing we were just looking at with the previous applicant.
What's that?
We don't know, we don't know if they were just dividing the land or if they were intending that.
How?
I agree, company versus, co- company versus, yeah, yeah, company versus individual.
Yeah, but, right, but I don't know, I just feel like we, we really need to consider, consider the, the verbiage of the ordinance ordinance.
Well, I'm trying to find ten six E. I don't know if anybody has it in the subdivision ordinance, because that's what you're supposed to define common space on. I don't have it in mind for some reason. So if you look on page thirty. If you look on page forty-one, it says common, common open space shall own and manage according to standards of ten six E. I don't have one. So that's what I'm looking for, to find out if it has to be its own lot, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it would be, um.
So that's what I'm.
It would be managed by the housing association or whatever.
Well, if it doesn't have to be a separate lot and you don't need association, that's all I'm trying to get at. If, if it's a deed restriction, you don't have to create common space or open space as a separate law.
Yeah, no, I think we're all talking about the same thing, just how we're supposed to proceed this, still on the table. Ten point, ten point six E? Yeah, I don't know, ten six E.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I just got struck in at some point and I don't have anything in it. Uh, I'll go back in some old stuff, but I don't have it. And that's what I'm trying to find out, what, how do they define common space?
You think it would be ten point one six E? But then it only goes to D.
Two Bs.
Or is that what happened?
What are you looking at, Dave? So on page thirty-five, there's two, there's.
Two Bs in that section.
Two Bs, so there's, the D should be E. It does, it's referring to common open space. On page thirty-five, D is supposed to be E, reservation and dedication with maintenance of open space and common land.
So we'd be looking at page thirty-six D?
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five D.
Talk about page D.
Oh yeah, I've got it right here, looking for it.
It's the homeowners association.
Right, it would be under common management as opposed to four different owners.
We can form a homeowners association and have them manage the conservation restriction in the back. So these lots, you know, the one that we keep, we would be a party to it and then the new homeowners who hopefully build and live in town could be a party to it and we could form a homeowners association and have them manage that conservation easement.
But it would be separate, but it would still be under separate ownerships.
Yeah, the land itself would be, but the conservation easement could be managed by the homeowners association, similar to, for the town, if the town wanted to manage the conservation easement. And we would clearly mark the conservation easement area on the plan and in the field.
Ask Jason to do it.
What do you think?
My opinion is the homeowners association is a good solution. But if you think there's a legal question, we should get it clarified.
Well, the legal question is whether or not we should follow the exact verbiage of the ordinance. It kind of puts us terrified if we don't follow what the ordinance is telling us to do.
I don't see where we're, maybe I'm reading it more liberally, but what they're proposing with, you know, the added caveat of the homeowners association, to me, follows what we're reading.
But it doesn't follow the guidelines of cluster subdivision. Cause there's other guidelines other than just the open space. That the lots are supposed to be gathered together in one area. That the housing envelopes are all supposed to be next to each other as part of the aspect of cluster subdivision, which in this case they'd be spread out one, two, three, four, which is just a difference, it's one.
Yeah, I see that.
There's other guidelines to a cluster subdivision than just the open space.
Yeah, I got it, but I, I think that's, I get a legal reading, but to me, I think we're talking two sides of the same coin. get a legal read, but to me, I think we're talking two sides of the same coin, we really do. But if legal thinks, no. I mean, in effect, how would that change the solution?
Create small lots, they're all congested in one area, and versus spread out one lot over time, over area, and then you still have a deep amount of common space. I don't, yeah.
The lots are gonna be the same size, size outside of the common space.
And you're still.
There wouldn't, there wouldn't be the, the four lots like that if it was a cluster subdivision. There'd be one area with four units. And then there'd be the common space.
They could shrink their lots to one acre lots along the water gavin, and then leave the back of it for a cluster sub, for open space, so they could still spread out. So, doesn't, with clusters, it doesn't have to be a cul-de-sac.
Well, we could, we would help them determine the size of the lots. Usually they'd cluster, cluster together, you know what I mean? But I'm just trying to find the differences.
I can get a definite, I can, I can ask for some, uh, some guidance for you guys, if you want, if you really, uh, if that's the way you want me, what we do with that, I can, um. Isn't there a lot less disturbance by doing it the way they're doing it as opposed to putting four buildings right next to each other? Yes.
Yeah, that's not where I'm, that's not what I'm differing, I'm differing with the verbiage of the ordinance, if we're still following the verbiage of the ordinance, I'm not differing with the, what the impact is. We just need to, we're supposed to go with what the ordinance says.
Well, the zoning ordinance says that it shall be developed as a cluster division, but the subdivision regulation says it may be developed as a cluster division.
Because a critical, uh, critical role's not in the subdivision.
Yeah, isn't the verbiage of the three homo lots within any five year period, says it shall be in the zoning, but says it may be in the subdivision? Subdivision's saying it's a critical role.
I'll get some guidance for you, Gavin, I'm gonna make some phone calls, I will have.
Well, I think we should have the rest of the board if they think we should get legal, it's not just me. I'm just, I've come across this before where we go against what the ordinance says and it puts us.
Again, I don't think, I don't think we're going against it yet.
Well, we're not right now, but we would be.
No, I don't think we are, I think it's.
So if you want, they have the option, if you say you want them to do a cluster, they can go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for leniency.
Yeah, our, our.
You can do whatever, whichever way you wanna go. Um, so.
It's not, to me, I'm just trying to define the differences, you're making it seem like it's me, but I'm just saying, like, I think we should take more time to consider it before we, that's, that's what I'm.
I, I don't think, um, the proposal goes against the spirit and what's written in the, in the ordinance, that's my opinion.
I don't think it goes against the spirit, I think it goes against the verbiage.
And you think otherwise?
No, I don't think it goes against the spirit, I think it goes against the actual verbiage. But, you know? The spirit is to protect the critical role.
Right, and I, and I think.
The verbiage says cluster, that, that's the difference.
I'll get, like I said, I'll get a definition for cluster and how it actually has to be defined to.
Oh, we have a definition right here.
What does it?
It's in the subdivision regs, I'm just looking at it. There, there's two pages of guidelines that are specific for cluster. So on page thirty-nine.
I don't know if it matters or not, but at this time, respectfully, we're not seeking a cluster, so I think we, if there is a, like a path that we need to walk down to get special permission to do this, I think that we prefer that than to go down the road of the cluster.
Oh, I know, that's why, that's why we're having this discussion.
Okay, I just wanna, so we're on the same page, um.
Oh, what's the board think, I? Do you think we should table it to consider it, do you think we should ask for legal's advice, do you think we should push forward?
I'm not against getting a further clarification of that, but I think, um, John, if, the spirit of it is, is met, I believe.
Likewise.
The ten of it, yeah.
I, I feel exactly the same way.
Yeah, with respect to what they wanna do. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we're necessarily going, going against.
Well, clarification.
Yeah, I had no problem asking.
Yeah. I guess we should ask for legal's advice.
I will, I will have that.
We get legal, go ahead, but it's a lot simpler, we will get stuck in the legal.
So, what does that mean for us, Jason?
Uh, means I'm gonna make some, do some emails tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, and I will be, um, sending you, uh, copies of what I get.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll come back to the next meeting, um, which is, we'll, we'll, we'll go back to, we'll do a conversation.
Any, any, um, just piggybacking off of our friend in the back, any opportunities for, I assume the site, cause it's part of your guys' like, like, uh, staff?
Yeah, um, do you guys want, did you guys wanna try to do that too as well, or, um, just in case we have any snow flying soon?
Well, let's just see where the lots are gonna go, right now, we don't know where the building imports are gonna be, because we have to get this defined. And the, the road, X, Y, Z, I mean, I don't think we're quite there, honestly, we don't have a, a path, but.
But you can see what the layout of the land looks like, at least. It's up to, I mean, you wanna actually know where the lots are or what it is, yeah?
And the, where the road goes right now, I mean, the road needs to be defined on the ground when we do the.
Yeah, actually, most of it is there.
I thought you were moving it.
Well, most of it, yeah, it's just gonna be shifted out a little bit. Um, cause it, if you see, it, I don't have their map, but theirs, if you look at, on, behind you, Gavin, theirs is running right along the inside of the two hundred fifty foot chican.
Yeah, Scrabble's the two fifty.
Yeah, oh, you got the map, so I actually have to shift it outside of the two fifty.
Right.
And then outside of the resource protection. I don't know.
So you'll be in touch, yeah?
Yes, yes, I will be.
Thank you all for your time, Merry Christmas to everybody.
You too, very much.